For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion that we adopt the agenda as published? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Hip, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, it carries unanimously. Item number three on our agenda are public appearances. Yes?
We skipped number one.
Sorry, thank you. Is there a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda, which was attached to your email? Motion by Mr. Shealy. Second by Mr. Reader, discussion. All in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise. There's always a wonderful lady keeping every man straight, I promise you, so we are appreciative of that. Now we'll move to item number three, public appearances. First one is Mr. Ben Setzler with Newberry County Soil and Water Conservation District.
Evening. Y'all pass these down.
Okay, all right. I'll take a couple this way.
Good evening, everybody. When I don't have to ask for anything, or get mad about anything, I just get to tell y'all the things we've been working on. So I'll keep this brief, but I do like to keep council updated from time to time. Me or one of my fellow commissioners, and that's what I'm gonna do here. As many of you know, we hosted our legislative breakfast in February. We appreciate Mr. Hip and Mrs. Scurry coming to that. Had a good crowd. Several other things we've been working on. Y'all know we have that feral hog grant, we've talked about a good bit. About $300,000, I think, coming into the county. We've had 334 hogs eradicated, I guess would be the more polite word, but they are gone from Newberry. And 24 farms. That program runs through September of '23, and we are looking for more participants. So if you know anybody that has a hog problem in any of your areas that you represent, tell them to call us. We can help with that. We had a cleanup recently in Whitmire, around Subertown Road, had 14 volunteers, picked up 42 bags of trash, three bags of recyclables, 12 tires, two chairs, and a sleeping bag. And that was just in one mile of road, which is a sad situation. That's something that we get that much litter from one mile of road. We are not alone in the state in that, unfortunately. But we're doing what we can to help a little bit. And speaking of that, our Great American Cleanup is coming up. That's our real big litter event that we have every year. That's March 19th, it's right here around the corner. We have seven groups signed up across the county right now. It's probably the best turnout we've had, at least pre-signed up groups. And of course, as always, we hand out free supplies to anybody wanting to pick up litter. Bags, picker-uppers, orange vests, help keep everybody safe. We provide all that free of charge. We have Camp Conservation right around the corner. That's our big signature event every year, where we have, we're looking at probably about 60 youth this year, maybe a few more. We have some scholarships and stuff to bring 10 children, maybe underprivileged, that maybe can't afford the camp fee to get them out there. We also just got a couple small grants to help with that. We got a $500 grant just this week. We're gonna take the kids to the Green Bull Zoo one day with that money, and we have $250 in donations. Now, speaking of grants, we have a grant we received, probably three weeks ago now, $9,100. And that's Palmetto Pride. All of that goes to cleanup and beautification in the county. So we're real happy to get that. We apply for that at every year, we usually get it, so we're happy to get it again. We have a movie night coming up on the farm. Happens to be my family's farm over there on Collie Street, the old Setzer Hatcher buildings where we have that. That'll be May 14th. It's free, y'all come out, we'll have a family-friendly movie, a few concessions. We just try to get everybody, a lot of people don't have a chance to get out on the farm and kinda talk just a little bit, but mostly just enjoy a night out on the farm and the movie. We got a pollinator garden going in, in mid-Carolina. We have an Earth and Sky photo contest running through October. We'll have some prize money with that, so if you know anybody who's good photographers around you, tell them to send us their Earth and Sky photos. We have a field day coming up, you have a flyer for that, at the Belfast Plantation. That's for wildlife and forest management, and prescribed burn and feral hog. It'll be a pretty involved day with that, a lot of information to be shared. We also have our affiliate newsletter we're still sending, you also have a copy of that, so feel free to peruse through that after I'm done speaking. We have, let's see, 43 affiliates signed up, we've raised $5,000 in local dues, and that will put towards beautification and conservation projects. Some good news, we, for about the last year, the NRCS, kind of our federal partner that we work with, and they're the ones that bring, you know, they bring the federal money in through our cooperation. Usually we get over a million dollars per year, comes to farms and landowners in the county. I think last year was right around 1.3 million, ballparking that. But we've been operating with a temporary district conservationist, the one we had moved on to another job, kinda moved up in the system, so we've had a temporary one, which is okay, they've done a good job. We are finally, at the end of this month, getting a permanent district conservationist in. That's a really good thing, that means they're totally dedicated to helping bring these funds and projects into Newberry County, so hopefully that'll bump up the amount of money coming into the county that goes towards these conservation projects. We have two more things. Last year, we were going through the budgeting, I'll call it a crisis, I guess y'all deal with it all the time, but I promised y'all a full audit that has been fully completed. I think y'all should've already gotten emails with anything, but if y'all have any questions or anything, everything came up good. No money missing, everything is where it's supposed to be. I hired an outside firm to do that, and everything was good. Been doing some state lobbying, I think some of y'all might remember, I'm chairman of the Legislative Committee at the state level, was where I was vice chairman for our state committee overall. Been doing a lot of state lobbying, working with the senators, House representatives. We're trying to get, and I think we got a pretty good shot of getting an extra $10,000 per district for every district in the state. $460,000 in the state, and that'd be $10,000 extra dollars every year, recurring funds coming to Newberry County. So we're working hard on that. I got a meeting with Ronnie Cronin, we're coming up, but if you talk to him, please tell him to support that. I think he's a supporter of us, he has been in the past, but feel free to remind him. But I think that's all I got. Y'all have any questions for me while I'm here?
Any questions of council? Just appreciate the job that you're doing and...
Happy to help.
Keep it going.
Yeah, I don't have a question either, but I've got a comment, thank you. During the budget process, you committed to keep us informed on what's going on, and you and the Newberry Soil and Water Conservation District have met what you said you were gonna do, and appreciate it, and also appreciate what you're doing on the state level, Ben.
I'm happy to do it, and y'all know we're easy to talk to, I think y'all have most of our numbers. Doug is chairman now, I stepped down, I'm vice chairman. Hoping to commit a little more of my time at the state level, making some impact there. But, you know, we're easy to get ahold to, you can call Krista at the office anytime, Krista's killing it, doing a great job. I don't think any of y'all have been to our monthly meetings, but I will say this, Krista cooks a meal for every meeting. They are incredible. She didn't tell us when we were hired, she can cook. Little extra bonus if y'all feel like coming to one of our monthly meetings, it's worth the food alone.
I appreciate what everybody said. Sometimes in controversy, you grow closer and stronger, and I think that's exactly what's happened between council and your organization, and so we're appreciative of that. And I watched, the Whitmire Church that I pastor is on the road where that is, we actually opened up our facilities for them to have lunch and all that.
That's what I heard.
And so I watched them go out and do that pickup, and it was a great thing, so I just appreciative of that.
All right, well, thank y'all for your support, let us know any way we can help.
All right, next is the lovely Jesse Long, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to be here, I am not by myself. So if you have questions, Karen Livingston from Town of Prosperity, the administrator there, is here. Colin Shealy, Deputy Director for City of Parks, City of Newberry Parks Recreation and Tourism. And Scott Sandor from Newberry County Family YMCA is here as well. So keep that in mind if you do have questions. I was asked to come and give an update on where we are with our baseball and softball, so I wanted to do that. So again, the WHO, so some things changed this year. So historically, the Town of Prosperity and the County of Newberry and the YMCA have kind of done baseball and softball, and then the city did baseball and softball. So we have all come together, we're super, we are super excited about it, we hope everyone else is, and we've been talking quite a bit about whether we've heard any rumblings of any issues, and we really haven't so far, that doesn't mean we won't. But again, this is the County of Newberry, Parks and Recreation, Town of Prosperity, the City of Newberry Parks Recreation and Tourism, and then the Newberry County Family YMCA, all collaboratively working together with baseball and softball. So the what? So we, it wasn't that we weren't all working together before, now it's just that we're all running the programs through one office, essentially. Is probably the best way to look at it. So this is really an extended or broadened partnership, because the Town of Prosperity and County Recreation, we're already playing and working with the City of Newberry Parks and Recreation, especially in the older age division. So that, not a lot has changed in what we're doing, and who, you know, who we're working with and stuff. But this is for ages three to 17, so this is from our WEETI all the way up through our junior baseball. And because of the interest we've even had in softball for ages 13 to 15, we're looking at even doing a junior softball over the summer, excuse me. So we started some informal discussions back in November 2020, and really, a lot of discussions were going on before then about that this really needed to happen. But we really kinda started sitting down in November of 2020, and then in July of 2021 is when we really started putting some things into place so that we could have this partnership and this program. So the where, so essentially, we're trying to do a 50-50 split, and it's a fun little logistical puzzle between the Town of Prosperity fields and the city complex, those new fields out at the complex. So we are still using some of the other city fields, but for the most part, everything is at the complex thus far. That may change once games start, and we have to find room for practices. But right now, we've kept it where teams have one practice in Prosperity and one practice in Newberry. And so far, people seem to be on board with that and excited about it. Our softball teams have always, from the county side, have always done this, but they also play Batesburg, Edgefield, and Saluda. So there is a little bit of travel, but because our softball teams have grown substantially, they don't have that much travel. Each team is traveling two, three times, so we're super excited about that as well. So why? So again, we were all already working together, but we were looking for ways to further this collaboration. Basketball already runs kind of through the same partnership. So the city and the county and the Y all came together on basketball, and this past year, we have 40 teams, is that right? And so it's been a huge success. We've had a lot of parents asking through the basketball, which has been four years now, I'm looking at Colin because they run point on the basketball. Four years now, and people are super excited about it, and they've been asking when we were gonna do this for baseball and softball. So we also did this because it was very confusing for parents, knowing which program they were signing up for. So this has reduced the confusion some, there is still some confusion, as there is Little League that operates primarily out of Palmaria. But this has reduced the confusion quite a bit. So when they go to the Y to register, or the City of Newberry Parks and Recreation, or the Town Hall of Prosperity, it's all the same registration form, it's all the same pricing, so it's much more easy for them to register and to get their questions answered, too, that's usually the other piece. But we also did this because we wanted to increase the participation in baseball and softball. As you've probably heard me say in the past, our numbers were starting to drop, so this was an opportunity for us to come together in hopes to increase those numbers, which we have. So this is a chart that shows where our numbers are. So the bottom is where the city was on their numbers, the middle is where the county was, and then the top is where we are, where we are together. And you'll see that with us coming together, that the number is higher than it was in 2019. We have a huge outpouring from the community and stuff, so we're super excited. So we have 540 kids registered, and this does not include junior baseball. So that number is not even in there yet because they play over the summer, so I didn't want to give you a number that, you know, is still evolving. So this is just ages three through 13. We have 47 total teams, so right now, the game schedule is 241. So I've been trying to make sure we get that all smoothed out. We secured our 46th and 47th coach yesterday, so we're excited. That's always a little bit of a struggle when it comes to the little ones. People aren't quite as eager to coach the three and four-year-olds, for some reason, as the 10 to 13-year-olds. But we've got all those coaches nailed down, all of our sponsors nailed down, so we're excited for the community's support. But we have nine WEETI teams, 10 T-ball teams, eight coaches pitch, seven minors, six ozone, and seven softball. That's four 12U and three 10U. And then this is where they all live. So as you can see, it's not centered in really any focus, I mean, obviously, there are some pockets, but the registrations are from all over the county, and outside of the county even, so. Any questions for us?
To open the floor for questions?
I'm sorry.
Are you still doing scholarships, and where do your scholarships base from?
Yes, sir, we do scholarships, the scholarships are based on need. And primarily, the Y already kinda has a process in place to determine need, so some of that is handled through them, but for the most part, if someone expresses a need to us, we try to provide a scholarship.
Is this Dixie Youth and Little League combined, or is it just one entity, or?
No, sir, this is, this is all Dixie Youth, so we run ours under Dixie Youth. So the baseball is Dixie Youth Baseball, and the softball is Dixie Softball Incorporated.
Mr. Shealy, I would chime in to say, there were some meetings preseason that I happened to be involved with, and I refuse to give up the vision that one day, Newberry County can play in one baseball league with their youth. I will not give up that hope.
I would hope it would eventually be that way.
Yes, sir, there were discussions.
Totally agree.
Well, Jesse, I just wanna say, this is so exciting that we've got this kind of cooperation, collaboration with Prosperity and the City of Newberry and the Y, so that we don't have parallel paths, and we've got people working together to... Recreation has never been in better hands.
Needed it for years, I think.
Right, yes, so we're all excited. The fields are being utilized year-round, for the most part, especially in Prosperity, they are. They go from being baseball and softball fields to soccer fields, so, and then, you know, the complex, you know, I don't wanna speak, Colin wants to come up, but their space is utilized year-round in some capacity.
I'm just saying, it really is neat to see, you come up here on a given weeknight, and the fields, kids, happy everywhere, teams are pulling it up. I have one that's having three to four-year-olds now, and I couldn't be more excited for it.
And he is coaching.
Anyone else? Jesse, thank you so much for what you're doing and for the report. Next is Sheriff, the Honorable Sheriff, High Sheriff Lee Foster.
Good evening, I think I'm on here twice, but this is gonna be about the correction officer. We've got a critical issue in the detention center, is we're having a difficult time keeping corrections officers and keeping those certified corrections officers there, as well as recruiting corrections officers. Salary is extremely low compared to what we're recruiting against, against the industries. And so we've lost a lot, we currently have seven openings in the detention center. Now, seven may not sound like a lot, we've got, I think roughly, 30 couple slots available, but we have to have so many people to guard so many inmates. And so we've had a critical shortage, and in discussing with Mr. Anglisi, some of the things that we could do while we wait on the salary study to come up, there is enough funds left in our personnel account due to not being able to fill the openings, that we can offer a retention pay to those that have been loyal and are staying there between now and the end of the fiscal year. And we would break that down into three separate payments for the remainder of the fiscal year. And we do that in order to make sure the person has remained there, and they don't get the whole lump sum, and then decide to leave. So Mr. Anglisi has been able to determine the amount of money that we would have left over, and it would be $1,200 for each employee divided into three equal payments a month. And anything that he would like to add?
We just feel like we needed to take some measure, and this was a measure within our existing resources that we could take to make sure we don't hopefully lose anymore. And of course, we're gonna work towards the comp and class study next year, but this is something we could do administratively, but just wanted to make sure you are aware we were taking this step under the circumstances we're facing right now.
It's a very difficult job, I mean, in that you're in an environment where you have people that certainly don't wanna be there. And in the environment that we have now, if through COVID and through criminal justice reform, the people that are actually being held in detention are actually people that really need to be in detention. So it's very difficult on the staff, but the other thing is, they're making roughly, depending on the slot they're in, $15 to $17 an hour, where most of the businesses here are paying $17 to $20 an hour. And that's where we're losing most of those employees. Detention officers are going in the private world, a little bit different in law enforcement. The law enforcement officers have the ability to go to other agencies. We just lost one this week, this law enforcement officer that's going to another law enforcement agency, just for a few dollars more, but it's closer to his home and where he grew up, and that's where he wanted to work, so. That's hard to compete with, but we're really having a problem in the detention center.
Any questions from council?
And it's no added money, we're not asking for any more money.
I think it's a brilliant use of existing funds to address a problem, so I commend both you and Mr. Anglisi for coming up with this solution, and I think it's well-deserved for those in the detention center. So thank you for letting us know, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, next is Mr. David Parnell, Director of Veteran Affairs.
I know we don't normally wear hats in a situation like this, but I'm a very proud Vietnam veteran, and I think that we need to show that. I passed out to you what I wanted you to read about a veteran. It basically says, what is a veteran? A veteran, whether active duty, discharged, retired, or reserved as the National Guard, is someone who at one point in his life wrote a blank check made payable to the United States of America for an amount up to and including his life. That is an honor. And there are way too many people in this country today who no longer understand that fact or want to recognize it. I think the one thing that I wanna take and more or less say is, we have veterans in this county, and I've, I work with them every day. I've been doing this almost 13 years now. When I first got here as the Veteran Affairs Officer, and I started talking with veterans, and they would say, well, I need to set up an appointment. I said, well, you can set it up, you know, we've got this date here, November 11th, free. Oh, y'all are not off? No, the county did not recognize Veterans Day as a holiday. So we worked, and we worked on through it, we've been doing it, as well as all the other county employees here. But it's not, it's not about a holiday, as it is a recognition of the veterans that we have. There's veterans on the county council, there's individuals on the county council that have family members that are veterans. I'm very, very partial to all of, and I call them my veterans, because that's what they are when they walk in my door. They're my veterans. And we have a lot of really, really good veterans here. And I think, based on what we've got and what we have, we have a lot of companies now here in the county that are helping to support the veterans, that are doing things to make it fun for the veterans to know that they're being taken care of. We have our parade, we have our Memorial Day service, we have Samsung feeds all of our veterans. They've been doing this for four years now, and they're not gonna stop. I have a direct relation with the people who do the public relations for them, and they've told me over and over again that that's it, you know, they're not gonna stop. There is one other thing that y'all need to be aware of, I'm not sure whether you are or not, but June 30th is my last day in the VA office. I have requested retirement, and I've got that down. And in doing and saying that, it's been a pleasure to be in this position. I have met so many new veterans, there was a lot of them that I put in the National Guard that went on active duty when they started activating, and now they're my veterans. It makes it kinda, kinda fun when you see one of your guys that you enlisted come back, and you can help them out because of a medical issue or something like this that they have. I am going to miss this job, I've already realized that, but it's time, it's time. I've got 54 years of government work from the time that I enlisted in the active army a week after I graduated from high school until now. So I just wanted y'all to be aware of that, that the veterans here are very, very important to me, and they should be very, very important to y'all, as well as everyone here. And I know we're gonna discuss this resolution later on, so I'll just take a back offer right now.
Okay.
But do you have any questions of me?
Anyone with any questions?
Thank you for your service.
Thanks, Nick.
We appreciate what you've done, and as you say, we do have a resolution to address the Veterans Day holiday later in our agenda, thank you.
Thank you.
And I do wanna admit that he did enlist me. All right, item number four on our agenda is to consider an agreement between the Newberry County Sheriff's Office and the School District of Newberry County, I'm sorry, the Newberry County School District for School Resource Program. The memo was included in our packet, I hope you've had a chance to review it. Looks straightforward as to operating procedures, is there a motion of council? I'd like to make a motion that we accept. Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Hip, is there discussion? I'm sorry, we're already long, is anything you wanna say, Sheriff?
Only thing is, I'd like to ask for, you know, this is a legal thing that Mr. Tuthaker could probably address. Of course, the agreement is just something that is required in order for us to be able to get the funding from the state. Some of the funding comes from the Department of Education, and some of the funding comes from the Department of Public Safety that funds the School Resource Officer Program. In the, in the agreement, it's a section that discusses school resource officers doing law-related training. And it says, we'll do law-related training. And we think it probably... training. And it says, we'll do law-related training. And we think it probably would be better to be permissive instead of directive and say may, because over the years, due to the COVID, everything's COVID. I almost get to the point where I don't even want to say the word, but COVID has required compact schools years and missing classes. And so law and law-related training is relegated to the civics classes and the history classes. And the officers have not been able to really do that, that much because of the, the compacted school years and the way they've had to do it. So the thing I thought of as we read this is that it, it says they either shall or will. I can't remember which, shall, which is a directive. It says you shall do it. And if we can't get it in through the school district, I mean, we've kind of violated the agreement. It's kind of perfunctory, but that's the only thing I would like to change.
Would you amend your motion with the verbiage being may instead of shall?
Yes, I definitely amend.
If it, would you amend your second?
Second.
All right. Is there other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, and opposed likewise. Carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. I left one thing off. If anybody knows anybody that wants a job and works in corrections, we certainly would be happy to. Anybody here?
A shameless recruiting effort. Ordinance number oh-two, oh-two, twenty-twenty-two, an ordinance to amend the budget ordinance for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two. Ordinance number oh-four dash twelve dash twenty-one, to provide for the revised revenue and expenditure appropriations related to the operating and capital purposes of Newberry County. First, this is our public hearing. I now declare this public hearing open. Anyone who would like to speak on this matter in the public hearing? Hearing none, without exception from counsel, will declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Anglisi, is there something you wanted to address with us before final reading?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. This is third reading, and each time we have a reading, the news gets better. So we, we've reduced the ordinance request or the budget amendment request. And so I just want to point out the two amendments this time around. First, the sixty thousand dollars for the comp class study. We have identified funding in this year's budget to be able to do that now instead of in an amendment. Essentially, we identified two line items for an insurance expenditure, but we only needed one line item for that expenditure. So we have between those two line items, we have enough to cover the sixty thousand dollars anticipated for that. So that won't, we've eliminated that and struck through that in this budget amendment request. The other thing is, originally, we had brought forward potentially two positions, but had working on the budget the last several weeks. No need to do a budget amendment for the administrator's assistant because it's already in the budget, which I did not realize at first reading or second reading. But we've confirmed that during the last few weeks while we've been working on budget. So the recurring cost of approving the payroll coordinator position is the fifty-five thousand dollars. And there's a note in the text box that indicates how we've reduced the potential recurring cost if you do approve this amendment. And that brings the total amendment. Of course, this covers the unanticipated increase in gas and diesel costs, and it also deals with the deposit from the ARP funds. And as a technical matter, it just kind of deals with the accounting for the ARP funds. So the budget amendment request on third reading is for a hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars, which is down from the original request of two hundred and eighteen thousand, five seventy-one.
Can't thank you enough, you and staff enough for the hard work on, on bringing that together. Public hearing having been had and hailed, and this information being given, is there a motion of counsel?
Make a motion to accept the final, third reading.
Accept of. Motion by Mr. Hip. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Shealy. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all of counsel in favor by show of hands, please. Opposed likewise. Carries unanimously. Item number six on our agenda is ordinance number oh-three, oh-four, twenty-two, oh-two-two, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the County of Newberry adopted June thirtieth, twenty sixteen. So is to amend the zoning map, acting upon a request to amend the official zoning map established, codified in chapter one five three of the County of Newberry Code of Ordinances. So is to rezone three parcel real, real estate parcel totaling thirteen and ninety-one hundredths acres designated as TMS parcels number six-three-nine dash eight, six-three-nine dash eight-seven, and six-three-nine dash eight-eight from RS single-family residential to R two rural. Are there any changes on this since the first reading? Okay, no changes on this. Is there a motion of counsel on this matter?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Hip. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Scurry. Is there a discussion? All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. It carries unanimously. Ordinance number oh-three, oh-five, two-oh-two-two, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the County of Newberry adopted June thirtieth, twenty sixteen. So is to amend the zoning map, acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established and codified in chapter one five three of the County, Newberry County Code of Ordinances, as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling one and forty-nine hundredths acres designated as TMS parcels number three-four-oh dash two dash two-one from RS single-family residential to R two rural. Any changes in this one since first reading? Okay. Is there a motion of counsel? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Livingston. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. All right. Next on our agenda is an executive session. Let me say that I know a number of you are here for items that will occur after the executive session. Normally, we do this later, but we need this, some legal advice related to a matter that appears later on the agenda before we get to that matter. And so that's why we're going to do that. I assure you that we know that the third reading on the property and the prioritization of the CPTST is on everybody's hearts and minds. And so I promise you, we will be as respectful as possible of your time from our executive session. Having said that, code section thirty dash four dash seventy, A two, is discussions of negotiations instant to propose contractual arrangements and proposed sale or purchase of property, the receipt of legal advice, where the legal advice relates to a pending, threatened, or potential claim or other matters by the attorney-client privilege, the settlement of legal claims, or imposition of the agency in other adversary situations involving the assertion against the agency of a claim. That would be subsection one. Subsection two for the executive session is code section thirty dash four dash seventy, subsection A, subsection five, which is the discussion of matters related to the proposed location, expansion, or the provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body. Having announced those reasons, is there a motion? We go into executive session. Mr. Hip, second by Ms. Airwood. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. We will adjourn to executive session. And again, our commitment is to be respectful.
All right, we appreciate your patience. I assure you, we did everything we could to, again, be aware of your time. Is there a motion that we adjourn from executive, not adjourn, but come out of executive session?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Ms. Airwood. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by show of hands. Opposed likewise, we now return to regular session. No, we were in the executive session for the aforementioned reasons, no action was taken in our executive session. Item number nine on our agenda is ordinance number two dash three dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance to declare surplus and approve the sale and transfer of a parcel of real estate property owned by Newberry County. We are going to have a public hearing, however, before we do that, we're going to take some privilege unless somebody on council calls me out of order and have our county administrator address some of the concerns that we know that many of you have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for your information and the public's information, the top bidder for the property known as the Kavanaugh tract put in a bid of one million two hundred ten thousand dollars. We've had two readings to approve the sale to that bidder, and of course, we've heard some comments from the public and from the city in particular about the bidder's original intentions for the land. Mr. Corzo has come to Newberry twice during this process to visit Newberry, to view the land. After second reading, we spent several hours with him just this past Friday and had very positive discussions about his intentions and about some potential alternatives to meet his business needs. I found Mr. Corzo and his son, who's the third generation to run their successful international business, to be extremely authentic and genuine and transparent throughout the process that we've been working with them. They are a successful family-owned business and an investor who wants to be part of the Newberry community and invest in Newberry County. He, in our conversations, I did share the concerns about the need for housing in Newberry County as well as in the city of Newberry, and the response from Mr. Corzo was, we want to work with the community and we will absolutely be open to doing a housing development on this property. We also discussed the possibility of an alternative location for the warehouse and distribution center, and we took him to some potential sites, and he's expressed an interest in and agreement that the warehouse and distribution would be more appropriate located at another location other than the Kavanaugh tract. So with that, staff feels very comfortable with the work that we've done with this bidder, their genuine expression of an interest to work with the county, to do housing at the Kavanaugh tract. The fact that he's an investor, not just a tissue business owner, but an investor, and he wants to invest in Newberry County. And those are my comments for the public hearing.
Okay. I wondered, many of us have gotten calls if anybody had a thing to say before we opened the public hearing. Hearing none, we just would say we've heard you. We've done our best to work on this, to find a way that these could coexist, and hopefully we're on the right track with that. Having said that, we now declare the public hearing open, and anyone who would like to speak on this matter can come forward and speak at this time.
Hello, my name is Carol Conkle, and Mr. Iglesias and I had had conversations after our previous council meeting, and he, I believe, has addressed most of my concerns and issues about this piece of property being developed as a warehousing slash industrial warehousing facility. I have no objections to these folks buying it if they intend to do something other than that with it. In saying that, does the county intend to have any type of contractual arrangement with the buyer to the type of housing that he's going to put there? I don't think that we are particularly interested in income-based housing or multifamily housing. We prefer to have community housing, subdivision-type housing, you know, where we have lots of rooftops and lots of revenue coming into the county and substantial permanent residences there. So I don't know if you've made any of those types of arrangements or considerations, or if that's a viable option concerning the way that this property was put out on a public bid. Do you have any answers for that?
Again, Ms. Conkle, this is public comment period, but we'll take your comments under advisement.
Okay. Well, that's just my main concern, that this tract was not suited for warehousing as close as it is to the proximity of Newberry City and the amenities in the city, the shopping, the hospital, the other services along that corridor that most of the public in Newberry depends upon. And we are in sore need, and you've heard me express this before in front of council, of quality housing to attract good quality families to Newberry, which increases our revenue exponentially over a single warehouse. And we need good community representatives. We need good people who want to come here and live here and work here. So as we develop the county with the industrial parks and such for other employment opportunities, housing has to be a component of that. It's sad when you can hardly get off the interstate at two nineteen in the mornings because everybody's commuting to Samsung and Komatsu from out of county. So I implore the county that if they are in the position to make some prescriptive-type use or some instructional-type use or restrictive-type use, maybe even would be the best word, for this piece of property to be developed into housing and subdivisions or whatever, the best and highest use to both the county and the citizens of Newberry County, it would be greatly appreciated. I thank you for your time.
Wise words, Ms. Conkle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? Hearing none, unless there's exception from council, we will declare the public hearing closed. This is the third and final reading. Is there a motion of county council?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept to be--
Motion by Mr. Reader. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Scurry. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, and opposed likewise. It carries unanimously. Item number ten on the agenda is a resolution establishing a Newberry County Council Economic Development Task Force, which will be necessary to assist in creating an economic development strategic plan. Mr. Reader, please say--
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had an economic development committee meeting recently where we discussed potentially establishing an economic development task force to assist staff with an economic development strategic plan. And this is something that Mr. Farmer and I have been discussing quite a bit and are in a hundred percent agreement that this is a policy document we're hungry for. We want a policy document that gives us economic development direction so that we're spending county resources in the right way and not trying to make ad hoc decisions in our operations of the economic development department. And I know council has expressed to me a desire to do more strategic planning, and I think that this is a great first area of the operations to do that exercise. So we discussed three different options at committee for getting this done. One was basically staff-centric, where staff did everything, appointed its own committee, and just, you know, worked through a strategic plan with a consultant. The other one was council-centric, where council was involved. I think with everything on your plate, that wasn't the recommended course, because this is going to be a fairly intensive process with hours-long meetings and consultants and lots of information and data and public comment and things like that. So the third option, which was the recommended option, was that you all have, each have an appointee that you would appoint to the task force, and then that would be the voting members of the task force, and they would work with staff and the consultant through the strategic planning process. There would be three additional ex-officio members that would be appointed by administration, and we would evaluate your appointments, and if we think there's a sector of the community that's lacking in representation, we would base our administrative appointments on that. They would be non-voting, but for example, we might want someone academic from the college or someone from the minority business community represented on that task force. So that's the proposal before you, is a resolution to establish an ad hoc task force that will conclude its work no later than June thirtieth of 2023 and work with us and a consultant, and we've identified funding to go ahead and move forward with the RFP process. We'll get the RFP to you for approval once we get through the process, but we're excited to move this process forward and get it going and get you a policy document that ultimately you all will vote on, but work with this task force to get the job done.
You've heard the county administrator's explanation. Is there, based on that and based on the documents we had to review, is there a motion of council on this matter?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hill, second by Mrs. Airwood. Is there a discussion? I would just say that strategic planning is exactly what this county needs as much, if not more than anything, and Ms. Conkle, that would address housing and recreation and some of the things that you're saying, and so we have to get a vision for where we're going so we know how to get there, and so this is part of our plan. So you were very astute in your comments. Anybody, any other conversation? Hearing none, all those in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. Item number eleven is a resolution amending the Newberry County Employee Handbook to add Veterans Day as a holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposal before you would establish Veterans Day as an observed county holiday. This, in my initial meeting with Mr. Parnell, we discussed the fact that the county does not currently observe Veterans Day when many of our other jurisdictions, in fact, thirty-nine other counties, many, the state and federal government have been observing this day. I will just tell you on a personal note that as the son of a World War II veteran, this day is a very valuable day for family interactions and to reflect on the service and the sacrifices of the service men and women. And as your administrator, I think that it's the right thing to do and would provide a much-needed morale boost when we've asked more and more of staff and demanded more and more staff over the recent years, and this is a piece of the puzzle to keeping our compensation competitive by having a holiday schedule that's competitive with our other jurisdictions. So for that and for many other reasons, including the reasons Mr. Parnell stated, we recommend that this be part of our handbook.
Motion? Mr. Livingston, second by Ms. Airwood. We went from we couldn't get their hand up to racing.
And this one, I feel like, I know the ancillary things that he said that were important, but Veterans Day itself, just honoring our veterans, is reason enough to have it in place.
I couldn't agree more, sir. Mr. Hill, did you have something?
No, we've got a motion and a second, and I'm all in favor.
Are there comments? Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to say I've been taking that day for years, so I think we should go ahead and--
I love it. I don't think we can do enough for our veterans, and so it's a blessing and it's an opportunity to say another way of saying thank you, and I do hope that people use it as a day of remembrance of those who served so well. So having said that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. It carries unanimously. We now arrive at the time to prioritize our CPTST projects. Each of you should have in front of you a listing. Over the weekend and the first of the week, members of council gave scores based on certain criteria to each of the projects that we had approved to move forward. Based on that, we've been given a preliminary ranking by those scores, and so they are listed. For our consideration, I think it might be best if we went by the number, the project number for right now, and then we would certainly publish that once we decide, if that's okay with the rest of council. That's just my ideas for how to do it.
It's a good idea.
Okay. Then we will, we will do that. We will refer to them by project number for the time being. They are ranked by our scores out to the right, but we certainly are not bound by that. We never, never intended that to be our final ranking, but rather a way of getting a preliminary list and having some open, honest discussions about those. Open the floor up for any comments from council.
Just a question. With these seven projects in the ranked order that we have them here, we would still be forwarding all seven of these to the CPST commission, is that correct?
That is correct. All seven of these projects are going. They just like for us to rank them in order, is the way I've been explained by staff, next Karen, and I'm getting yes from Mr. Iglesias and Karen. So of our priorities, what they mean to us.
All right, I'll break the silence.
Okay.
Item four, being ranked as low as it is when it could have potential as much economic impact on our county, I really have a problem with it being at six.
Okay.
I do think because we're in this Flintstone century versus the 21st century, I think number, well, I guess it's what's ranked number one needs to remain number one.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, in a lot more depth of thought process, the one that's number two, project number two and ranked number two at this time, when you go to what need, 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 need versus won't and what might be good, uh need and cost caused me to drop that one considerably in my rankings. So again, I'm just not so sure where the need is. The one is currently number five, the only thing that concerns me about that one, which is project number three, um, uh, the thing that concerns me more about that one is the overall cost. Um, but the value that it has to everybody's, God, it's 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 kind of hard to talk around these things without.
If you need to go ahead, go ahead.
Safety and well-being of our people is 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 a high priority. That should be one of the things that us council members, we should be focused on i- is the well-being in 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 all of our citizens. So I'm a little concerned that that one's at a five.
Yes, sir.
Again, at the same point in time, I realize all seven of these items are going to, but I just don't know how much emphasis they will put on the.
The ranking.
The ranking.
Rankings of us. Um, uh, you know, we've got a lot of good ones there. I mean, that that number one is ranked number four right now. When you already got a building in place and you taking the chance of not taking care of it and the deteriorating the building and you talking about a multimillion dollar building that could go to nothing by not taking care of it, um, that's a concern. So anyway, just start off conversation.
I I'm in concurrent with everything that you said. Any else want to offer comments?
Well, I'm looking at uh project number eight being ranked.
Mm-hmm.
Number seven and and I, when you're talking about need base, I think that would um would really be something that's, that would help citizens out all over the county. And for it to be ranked as low it is, it is and stand a chance of not being considered because of the low rank, I truly believe that should have been up a little higher. If we basing things based on need.
And that certainly is to be one of our considerations.
Part of the difficulty we're faced with here is the prices of the projects. Some of these projects are considerably less expensive than others. And so in a, a decision that's to be made by the CPST, even though we may rank them a little lower when they look at the total funds that they have to work with, then they may choose a couple of these cheap uh less expensive projects. So I, I'm not really sure how we kind of consider that cost factor. And I I struggled with that whenever I was going through this list. But I I don't think we're gonna ever get to a point where all of us could agree.
No.
On all these rankings. We we've all gave it our best shot.
Well, my, my, well, my concern is if it getting past the uh voters. Yeah, that's my biggest thing because if we don't get past the voters.
That's right.
We get, we get two major milestones ahead, the CPST and then the voters.
That's exactly right.
Well, and to, you know, the reality of it is we, this is only part of, there be other municipalities, other ent- other entities that will all have theirs blended together. So this is not a reflection of what will come back to the voters either, so.
And the CPST uh commission is certainly not bound by our rankings.
No.
I think with all the prices are high, say there is, but the price not that much important to it. If the county needed, they needed. And I think that we should, number eleven should be number one. Number one should be number two. Number eight should be number three and so forth. If the county need those things, the county need it. We should buy the bullet and give them their needs now, you know, since they're putting it all. And I don't think we should rank them by the price of them. If the county need it, it's the need, if it's a need for the county, we need to go ahead and put them prior, them first.
I think, and and I think what you're saying and I I, you know, it's not just the prices, what you're gonna get for that price.
That's correct.
What is the, what is the thing? So I I think you make a valid point.
If you said in the county, we need to repair that building, repair it.
What is the bang for your buck, if the old people would say?
And y'all have looked at it, someone really is, someone really is a need, it's not a want. Because what the price is, we need to repair that place.
But when you look back at the the four, number four on the project number.
Right.
What we heard while ago, everybody heard that number of what has the potential for outcome there.
And and to have it down at six just kind of concerns me considerably.
Also on this one, there's possibility of getting grants that might would reduce that number. Should that be be made known to uh the committee? The uh Mossens Way. I mean, I don't.
Yes, we we, there's a um, I think the deadline is in June and the extension, the two point eight million, two and a half of that would is part of that grant application.
Should we not make that known on this to the?
Yeah, I mean, one option is to reduce the four point four million down to uh.
They will do that when they go through because we don't have that money yet, so we can't say that for sure.
They won't have it by the time CPST either.
So they can tell them maybe.
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 But that would make the not, you know, they're looking at how much projected income is from this.
Right, just like the detention center, you can put a cap on that for the improvements plus the three hundred thousand the grant would be short of um if you desire to do that.
So that would be something like uh two million. I hadn't added it up. Two million.
We would want clarification and direction to change that for the purposes of submitting to the CPST, if that's what you choose to do.
I I don't, I I guess my position on that would be I would hesitate to tell them we're gonna get it if we don't have it yet because grants are grants. And so um, but you'd say, hey, we're looking at this, but I don't want to say that we have it.
Well, that's at least put it in there.
Yeah.
That's possible.
Possible to get.
Because.
What I would say is on that one is ask two million dollars instead of the four point four because at least two million dollars would pay for the improvement.
We've, uh, based on a phone call, we recently had a conference call, it's very likely that we're gonna get it.
Yeah.
That might would even change our ranking on that one because of the cost.
Like I said, if you went to me and you would at least be able to cover the improvements if we are fortunate enough to have some things happen, the extensions may come from somewhere else anyway.
Other comments? We have, we gotta make a decision.
I would really love to see this public safety complex. Um, the problem with that is it is about a third of the amount of money that's projected. Is that not right?
Well, we got some new numbers Thursday or so.
I think it was like six or seven.
Yeah.
So um, last week, we forwarded the engineers. Um, there were two additional options for your consideration. So the nine point six was the original. There's an eight million dollar option that basically reduces the scope of the nine point six million. And then there's a six point one million that eliminates the rescue base and keeps the fire base. So that that's what was sent to you last week for your consideration.
That helps. I I'm, I like the eight million dollar option and looking at those. I think the six point one just cuts it to the point to where you're spending, yeah, you you're spending a lot of money and you're not getting the use out of it. So but I do think that the eight million option is 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 certainly much better. Think that's a happy compromise.
Likewise, we would want some clarity and direction on on if you did want to reduce that.
Yes. And I think that helps that project move up the list in in my opinion.
Ranking.
Yes.
I think out of a lot of them, that and the detention, well, we wish we didn't have to have the detention center. But I think the public safety affects more people, their lives than a lot of the other fun projects, if that makes any sense.
Well, by reducing.
That would be four million less if we did.
I was gonna say by reducing the project number three by one point six million, that almost covers um project number eight and eleven's cost.
Yes.
So that's what I was talking about earlier. The lower the cost is, the more likely sometimes that it can be picked up instead of the super high-priced projects or then you're very limited as to the number of projects.
If I was on the committee, I would be looking, okay, we're only gonna get, I think we projected thirty-one million, something like that.
I don't think it's that much. I think the carryover helps some with that, but I don't think it's that much. What's the prediction? Carryover, thirty, and that's with some carryover, right?
Is that with the carryover?
But that's with no bonding.
Right.
That's before, yeah, there's enough, uh, what, over four million dollars in fees and interest that would have to be back now that if bonding.
Yeah.
Was done.
And the carryover technically goes back to the previous year's projects first, correct?
Yes, we have to use the first part. Um, anything that's carried over has to finish out the RFPs. And um we still have a decision to make.
And and they've got some good options that are actually cheaper than what they have budgeted, so we'll we'll get that too.
Now, the number two one is jointly sponsored. Is that the total cost of the project or is that just our part of the project?
That's the total cost.
Because again, when you go to what need is, that's uh low on the need list. Um, does it have potential? Yes, but it doesn't have anything close to what the number four has for us bringing in future dollars. And it doesn't have anything to do with safety and so forth. So anyway.
I guess it does make it a little more palatable to know it's palatable considering it's a, that's total cost for two entities co-sponsoring.
Yep. I guess at some point, somebody's got to call a number. I I guess if I was ranking, I'd like, and I'm gonna shock y'all all with this, but I'd like to see number three be the number one project. So y'all can talk or name your project or whatever else you want to do.
Well, if eleven doesn't get funded, do you think we can fund it out of?
I do.
Because I feel like where we are and where we need to be, that's gotta be something that's got to be done.
That's that's the number one priority.
Yeah.
From somewhere.
And considering it's only two hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Yeah, I just think is the.
I would almost like to see that still be number one and then come back to the to the one you just said is number two.
How about that?
For potential growth and what we need for economic development, I'd almost like that to be number three. And then the rest of them, I mean, I don't know how, I I don't know. Like I said, it's it's tough. All of them's good. But if we could take number four to two million dollars.
The the number eleven project that's ranked number one, just so we can start making some progress, is everybody good with that being number one?
Good with that.
Is anybody not good with that being number one? All right. Six more to go. Um, you've heard two of us say to number two, number three is number two.
I agree.
Speak now.
I like numbers um.
Hold on, let's finish this first. Oh, you want to change that?
Well, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I would like uh number four to be number two.
Okay. So that would just flip-flop those.
Yes.
Okay. What do you think?
Because of the impact.
Yes.
We got one and two.
The detention center number four.
Wait, we ain't done number two yet. Y'all trying to confuse me and it's not ours.
I still like number three as number two.
Okay, all right. So we got like five at.
Number one shouldn't be three.
Three, we go on, we got one, two, like four at, say in number two and then Ma- the Mossens Way at three and then Mr. Reader would like to reverse those, so.
Okay. Well, if the impact of number four occurs, then the number three is gonna be more essential.
I try. Yeah, those are, those are related.
Kind of like the egg. It's kind of like the egg or the chicken.
That's right.
Which came first? And we could put them at a tight two, three, or we could tie them at two, two and do like the football rating.
So other than Mr. Reader, what would you want to go with for number two? Between Mossens and number three.
I agree.
Okay.
Which one?
Can you live with it the other way?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right, so let's do that. All right, no, I like it, I like it. Project number three is number two, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes. And then project number four is number three.
Yes.
That's what I've heard.
That's it.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It may, maybe now's not the time to do this, but is, what dollar amount for for each of those? Do you want to discuss that now or after?
Let's get them ranked first.
Okay.
Because this is not easy. And then we can go back to the dollar amount. I think clearly on number three is that dollar amount, the middle one that we talked, I mean, I'm sorry, on number two, that middle dollar amount that we talked about, I think that was kind of the consensus at the eight million dollar mark. Okay, and then on that other one.
Two.
Two, yes, with hopes that we'll get the grant on the other. Okay?
And even if we don't, we can still complete the improvement side of it without any additional dollars.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, on that, if we've gotten as far as one, two and three, I'd like to see number two, that was previously ranked number two, be ranked number four at this time.
Okay.
This is a.
I compare.
A pretty historical time when the city and the county can collaborate. And we've gone through quite a bit of effort at this time in both the city and county and with other documentation and so forth. I've um, I think it's very important to go forward with this. I think this has economic development implications. I think it has quality of life implications. I think it has uh, has an opportunity. has an opportunity to keep Newberry moving forward. And I think it has a special opportunity of garnering public support in the referendum, and none of these projects will be paid for if the public doesn't vote for them.
Absolutely.
So I would like to see our project number two, uh, be ranked fourth.
Mr. Livingston?
We've got a roof replacement HVAC improvements at the museum on a building that we currently own. And if we don't get that, don't do something with that. We look at a building that completely deteriorate and go to, in a handbag. And I just feel like that should be four, and I can go with the other one as five, but I just feel like we need to take care of what we already got before we develop something else.
Mr. Airwood?
This is tough.
It is tough. If it was easy, anybody could do it.
I couldn't leave risky funds money use for some of that, huh? The risky funds money not used for some of that.
You want me to come back to you while you think?
Yeah, come, come back.
Mr. Reader?
I would like to, I, I, I can agree with what, um, Mr. Livingston just said.
Okay. Reverend Curry?
I would say number, number nine, four.
That, yeah, we have one suggestion that number two be the, the number four project, and one suggestion that number nine be the number four project.
What else I need, number nine, to me?
Okay.
I kinda agree because the city's gonna prioritize theirs too, so they're gonna have two entities prioritizing. And so I feel like that they would bring it up because the city's gonna probably prioritize that one too.
Okay. Would you be willing to accept that in that order?
With number two being number five?
Yes.
And number nine being maintained, it's number four?
That's correct.
If that's agreeable to everyone else, uh, I would, I would think that would be okay, especially since number one and number four both would only equate to just over 1 million.
You're not, not...
So I got a feeling that both of those are slam dunks, and so, uh, so I think we're really talking, uh, about not really a shift in, in...
As you said, number nine would state number four?
Y- yes.
Yes.
That's correct. And I, I wish that number eight had been able to be higher, but I do think that should be our next project, um, right behind the other.
Yes, definitely.
I, I think that project has a lot of potential, and I really want us to, to help with that project, and that too is a co-sponsored project, so I would like to see it go next.
It'll be number five?
Be number six.
Six.
Amphitheater's five?
Yes.
And, uh, Goleman's six?
Yes.
But it's a co-sponsored, so...
That's correct.
The city will be putting, they'll, they'll prioritize theirs, so they'll be looking at both.
And that leaves number one to be number seven?
Yes.
Yes?
That's all that's left.
Yes. Everybody in agreement? Don't take it home and be mad. The devil eat you up with it. All right, then the motion, uh, for the proposal of council, and we would need a motion to this effect, that our ranking would be, number one would be the courthouse IT network security improvements, number two would be the public safety complex friendly fire location, number three is the Mossens Way improvement and extension. The firehouse grounds, we're recommending that the $8 million project move forward. We will, if we get a motion to that effect. And number three, we're recommending that the $2 million, uh, go forward. Number four would be the roof replacement and HVAC improvements at the museum, number five would be the downtown amphitheater, number six would be the renovation of old Goleman High School, and number seven would be the new detention center. Having published that as their motion, that that be the, the movement of this council and the direction of this council to our staff. Motion by Mr. Curry, second by Mr. Reader, is your discussion. All in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise. It carries unanimously. Is there any other direction you need from us on that? I didn't, I don't think I said approximate. Did I? Okay, that, that, the middle number, yes, the middle number.
Yes, because that 250,000 funds one of those other projects.
That do the courthouse almost. And if it didn't, we sure could find 45,000.
Some being 750,000.
And we would ask those, we appreciate all of our volunteer fire and rescue being here, and I, I wanna tell you, one of the most important things you can do is come back to your CPTST, and then once this hits the ballot, is to get out to the public and let them know how desperately you need this, and that they need to sponsor this and vote for this when it comes to a referendum. Because that will make the difference, no matter what priority we give it, if the public doesn't sponsor it, it's not gonna happen, and so please do use your support, get your other fire departments and rescue squads to get out and support this as well. That's right, yeah, don't... Thank you. Yeah. So you can't take any of your county equipment out and work to, to support that. You can't use your ambulances, fire truck, anything like that to, to work in support of this. Nothing. Good point, Karen, thank you for bringing that out. Um, it's always a good reminder. Next on the agenda is, uh, our public comments, and one of my heroes, Mr. Jimmy Smith, is the first one signed up. Come on up and speak to us, my friend.
Thank you. I'm glad I felt good today. The only thing that I was wanting to ask the council to approve is approve a lot down in Moore Park for me to put, for us to put a marker recognizing first responders, because they have really put it to the thing, showing this community what they can do and, and what they do out there for. And I tell you what, if you ain't never been a fireman or a policeman or a nurse or a rescue squad or ambulance, hey, they work, they, they earn this. And all I wanna do is counsel to prove, to put, for me to put a marker down there for them. It's gonna be a statue, not, nothing like's down there. It's gonna be a whole lot smaller, but I, I hope it's considerable. I've done got the people's degree to do it, I've done got the people's degree to give me the stuff to do it with, and it won't cost the council one penny, just give me the lot.
Could, yeah, could, I get you, uh, I, I'm all for it. Anything we can do to acknowledge our public safety, but if you could get with Mr. Iglesay, we work out, get y'all to work out the details, and we'll do everything in our power to help you to make this happen, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Next is Mr. David Parnell.
And I said, I said most of my stuff earlier, but I just wanted to say thank you for passing that resolution for our Veterans Day. The county has an obligation to our veterans to, to thank them and show your appreciation for them. The veterans in this county bring a lot of money into this county from different sources, either, uh, cash money for pensions and, uh, service-connected disabilities, as well as money being spent for the, you know, for veterans here in the hospitals and stuff like this, and we do thank you.
Thank you again, sir. Thank you for your service.
Congratulations on retiring.
Congratulations on retiring. I highly recommend it.
I'm not coming back.
Yeah, don't get tricked. Senator Pope signed up. I don't see him, he, oh, there he is, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. You were hiding behind the podium. I couldn't see you for that. Uh, Mr. Jerry Haltwonger?
He's gone.
Gone. Uh, Ms. Geneska Hazel? Gone. Um, and Ms. Carol Kunkel spoke. I don't see her. Did she not come back either? She left as well. All right, we, we, we burned the midnight oil and they got tired. All right. Next we have comments or requests from our county administrator.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be very brief, but I'd like to use this opportunity to acknowledge staff from time to time, and recently I was invited to the friendly fire department, and, uh, I thoroughly enjoyed my visit. I see some frie, some friendly faces in the crowd tonight, and, um, it was just a great learning experience, being new and meeting them and hearing their challenges, and, um, just seeing the brotherhood and fraternity that is what our volunteer service is. Uh, it's extraordinary, and I just want to share that from my perspective, it's really cool to see what they do for, and learn about what they do for the county.
Awesome bunch of folks. Next is comments or requests from council members. Mr. Shealy?
Too much to take in at night.
Mr. Livingston?
I'm good, thanks.
Ms. Airwood?
I just want everyone to know that we really take this serious when we worked on this CP, CPSD, if I got the initials right. I'm bad about transposing it, but we took a, I took a lot of thought into it, and, uh, I look forward to getting this passed. It's gonna take everyone talking to their neighbors and their, um, friends and, and loved ones that live here to, to keep this penny sales tax. Uh, it's not a new tax, and you can look around in our community and just see the things that it's already built, like Pigmont Tech and, uh, the library was one of it, what, and just on and on and on, the things that we've built with it, and that's the only way I think we're gonna be able to, uh, grow in those buildings and things that we need, so, uh, we need y'all's help now, after the, the committee gets through with it, to, to push it on through, and thank y'all's for your interest.
Reverend Curry?
This morning, I had to find my score sheet, and I started working on it, and once I got here tonight to the public, our chairman said, got started over again, and I thank you for the advice, thank council for putting our hands and hearts together, did our best going. We thank y'all for coming out to be with us tonight, and we hope we made everybody feel good. I seen us work so hard together. Thank you so much.
Mr. Reader?
Yeah, I just like the fact that everybody came out tonight, uh, to show your concerns and, and to talk about the things that you wanna see in Newberry County. Because that's the only way we'll know. If we don't hear it from you, we won't know ourselves, so it's good to see everybody, and, and I hope this is something that's gonna keep trending.
Mr. Hip?
Um, CPSD, yes, this is gonna be, uh, we still got a long road ahead, and, uh, many of you that are affected with your projects that you're sponsoring will need to now approach the CPSD commission and make the same pitch to them that you've made to us. But remember, at the end of the day, like Ms. Airwood said, uh, you're gonna have to, um, support it all, or you may as well not support any, because there's no option once it goes out for referendum. And whatever projects leave the CPSD commission, that's what's on the ballot. You can't pick and choose. You can't just support your project. You're gonna, you're gonna have to support them all if you want the referendum to pass. So, uh, this is a time where up to now, you may have been competing to get your project, uh, looked at favorably over the neighbor's project that are here, but going forward, uh, uh, after the CPSD commission makes their decision, then you're all, we're all in the same boat together, and we all have to push to get it passed. It's no longer a single project.
Absolutely. Um, I would just say, uh, I wanna go back to just that property. We were all talking as we were coming in, we got some call, phone calls about it, and I hope that this council has been able to prove its good faith effort in doing what's best for Newberry County, and, and trying to get some more housing into the county and doing some other things, and so I appreciate Mr. Iglesay and the dedicated efforts you and Mr. Tophaker made, and all the rest of the staff, and working with them and getting them in town and talking to them, and found a way forward. Hopefully, hopefully, we can get the housing and the warehouse, they coexist, and we double win in this situation, which is what it sounds like very likely could happen. And I think that, that is what the best option was for this county, so I appreciate that. Appreciate all the one cent sales tax, the, the, uh, capital sales tax and all that. Appreciate all that y'all have done so far, all those, and if your project didn't score when you want it to, know that this is hard. When I sit over there, this looked easy. Once you jump over this railing, I promise you, it's a lot harder than it looks, and so, uh, please know that we pray about these, and we try to do the right thing, uh, with each decision that we make. Future meetings are: Finance Committee on 3/28 at 6:00 p.m., County Council Meeting on April the 6th at 6:00 p.m., Budget Work Session, April the 12th at 6:00 p.m., the County Council Meeting on April the 20th at 6:00 p.m., which will be our first reading of our budget. Uh, we have an executive session on April 25th. Do we have that?
Executive Committee.
Did I re, oh, I'm sorry, Executive Committee, thank you. I'm like, I don't remember that. Executive Committee, uh, meeting. You have waxed on me almost three hours now. Executive Committee Meeting on April 25th at 6:00, and then another brother, Budget Work Session on April 26th at 6:00 p.m. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Shealy. Surely, surely I can get a second. Second by Ms. Airwood, all in favor, by show of hands. Thank y'all. This is a great council. We're really working well together. It's a blessing.